I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. The community candidate and council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, YouTube, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, Sipley Channel 34, or listen live by calling 510-335-7371. I will call roll, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Khan.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th celebrates the histories, cultures, traditions, values, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean; and whereas the significant observation began as a weekly celebration in 1968, known as Hispanic Heritage Week, under President Lyndon B. Johnson, it was then enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, by President Ronald Reagan, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies and events conveying respect, awareness, and understanding of the lived experiences of Hispanics, Chicanos, and Latinos. And whereas reflected in the most recent U.S. Census in 2020, 62.6 million people claim these identities, making this collective the largest racial, ethnic population in America at 18.9%. In the city of Redmond, the Hispanic, Chicano, and Latino-American population represents a significant and fast-growing demographic. And whereas 2023 National Hispanic Heritage Month theme is "Todos somos somos uno," we are all, we are one, which embodies the heart of Redmond, reflecting the city's beliefs, practices, and aspirations. Now therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Redmond, and encourage our community to join us in reflecting and celebrating the significant contributions of Hispanic, Chicano, and Latino-Americans to making Redmond a great city. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. Speakers have four minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium, have four months, excuse me, four minutes, to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 42.17A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates. I will usually start by calling out the first four names or so, so you know when you're coming forward. Alex Zimmerman, then Donna Lurie, then Angelica Graham, Janet Richards.
Yeah. Zihail. Zihail. Them Nazi fascist. A mafiosi bandito who support Iranian Muslim, a terrorist, and their Russian friend. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I live in Bellevue more than 25 years. Guys, situation so critical, so unique, this can happen only in Seattle and King County. Look this article. What is Seattle Times print in August 13? They support Iranian Muslim. Is this not merit what is kind of support this? We have war with them. Is this war very long? Is this very dangerous war because Russian involved in this business? So they want atomic bomb, they want destroy Israel, and I'm a Jew, I cannot handle this. I don't want what is another 8 million Jew will be dead. Yeah, we have experience one time, very close. Yeah. So in Russian, we'll be help them, you know what it mean delivery atomic bomb? Because right now, what is we have right now? What is we have right now? We have a real war right now, probably number three. So my question right now to everybody who not freaking idiot, to real American, you know what it mean? Stop they support Democrat, local Democrat, because I never see like this before, and I live more than 25 years. So we support somebody with who we in war. So in all country, in this planet, when somebody support enemy with who have war, you possibly go in jail or execute. They doing this absolutely legally, because it's massive mafia, a bandito with Nazi Gestapo principle, and I know this. So right now, I speak to everybody who listen to me, guys, stop support Democrat. For last 20 years, they make us life miserable. Show me one point what is they do doing good for people. Sound transit with $100 billion, this is him. Another transportation, what is we have right now? Where is the problem? Why I cannot understand this idiot, you know what it mean? I call them happy cow. What is they support Democrat? No, I understand somebody Democrat very have business together. Yeah, I understand it's money always dominate about this. Yeah, but why? Why so many year we elect same people who make us life miserable? Who doing this? Okay, maybe somebody will be elect them, but not totally all Democrat everywhere right now, in Seattle, in King County. It's a nightmare. Look price for house, for rent. Look price for gas. Look price for food. Look what has happened with criminality in policeman. It's a nightmare. Can somebody explain to me who this idiot who will support this for another four year, for example, huh? Why? Why you doing this, huh? No, I understand people who work for government, you know what it mean for city, for example. You know what it mean? You don't have choice. You post to be be loyalty. But this another city in Redmond, how many people in Redmond? Hundred thousand? Stop elect this bandito. Stop elect this mafia, what is make us life miserable, suck blood and money from us. And every percentage American right now very poor, totally poor, don't have money ever for food. And everybody knows this, so where is the problem, huh? Can somebody give me a question? Why American people doing this? American, you understand citizen, why they doing this? So my proposition to you, and I speak this in every meeting, what is I can, you know what it mean? Stop, stop this Democrat bandito. Thank you very much.
Point of order? Yes. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to note, I believe that Mr. Zimmerman is a candidate for political office, and I felt that in the comments just now, got close on the line around speaking about elections. So I would just ask Mr. Zimmerman, in future comments, to adhere to the rules as the mayor laid out at the beginning of items from the audience.
This Seattle Times, about you talking? This Seattle Times.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Seattle Times, I'm from Baker News.
Next, we have Donna Lurie, and then Angelica Graham, Janet Richards, and Susan Cousins.
Stop play stupid.
My name is Donna Lurie, and I serve as the current Board President of the East King County Affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, known as NAMI. Our offices are in Redmond. Many of the individuals and families that we serve live and work in this area. We support additional resources allocated to mental health crisis response. As a person trained in crisis intervention, and as an observer on several police ride-alongs, I am well aware that mental health crises come in many forms and degrees of volatility. Some crisis calls involve a person having a psychotic episode who is nonviolent and does not have a weapon. In the example described in our letter, this individual was intimidated and distressed by having three burly, uniformed, and armed police officers show up at her apartment for a welfare check. They were kind, calm, and very professional. Still, she shut her door as quickly as she could. A trained mental health specialist could have provided a less intimidating presence, and possibly more encouragement to seek treatment. As you know, those in mental health distress frequently engage in substance use to self-medicate their emotional pain. Sending an EMT without a medical health professional addresses the medical emergency, but not the mental health crisis. A co-responder model could address both needs. Similarly, sending a mental health professional to de-escalate a situation involving weapons or criminal activity could address mental health issues, but would not address public safety issues. A co-responder model where professionals work collaboratively on a team, rather than in silos, could address both needs without placing non-police professionals at risk. As suggested in our letter, we believe this situation can be resolved with an "and" mindset, rather than either-or. As a practicing mediator, I urge you to convene a facilitated meeting with key stakeholders, community leaders, and city representatives to discuss and resolve each agency or department's role, responsibility, and authority in specific crisis responses. Dispatchers will need training and critical questions to ask before sending calls to crisis response teams. There are several examples of mobile response teams and co-responder models being used in King County and Washington State that have eliminated the silos. None of us work in a vacuum. We need stakeholders to work together to maximize the resources that we have and provide the most effective response that we can in different crises facing our families and individuals in Redmond. Thank you very much for this important work. We are happy to help.
Next is Angelica Graham, then Janet Richards, then Susan Cousins, then Joy Randall.
Hello, Mayor Burney, and members of the Redmond City Council. I'm here on behalf of local community members and organizations that work together to engage people of color regarding access to resources and their safety. Our community members repeatedly ask to be included in program development and decision-making when it comes to services that will be provided to them or utilized by them. We call on the city council to shift the focus back to the hiring of the Behavioral Health Specialists for Community Crisis Response in Redmond. We want to uplift the importance of community crisis response that can be equitable, safe, and inclusive for all communities in Redmond. As you begin towards making steps towards developing crisis response for the Redmond community, we encourage incorporating a culturally responsive lens by developing services alongside community-based organizations who serve various immigrant communities in the area. In addition to that, the training for these behavioral health positions should include information and education on culturally respectful cultural aspects related to mental and behavioral health issues, and an understanding of the impact of racial and cultural biases that can lead to disparities in crisis response. We have a letter that was signed by 11 organizations encouraging Redmond to revisit their commitment to hiring behavioral health specialists and developing a community safety response that is culturally appropriate for the communities that we serve. These organizations are willing to be a resource to the city and provide guidance, which I can help connect you with them if you are wanting to arrange those types of meetings and those types of connections. We strongly advise that you take into consideration the safety of our Black, Indigenous, and other people of color in Redmond, to develop community safety processes that are equitable, inclusive, and safe for everyone. We look forward to the next step in Redmond's leadership to support these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Janet Richards, Susan Cousins, Joy Randall, and Matt Gleason.
My name is Janet Richards. I live in the Redmond part of Rose Hill. And often when we have conversations about issues like this, equity and public safety, mental health policy, and racial disparities, we hit a wall immediately arguing over intent. I want to be clear. I believe most, if not all, of our intentions are good. We want what's best for our community. Where advocacy matters and why we are here today is to hold us all accountable when we have evidence that the impact on our community does not match our intentions. You've already heard many statements in this room, and earlier during the budget cycle from the community, our concerns about the disparity and impact when it comes to mental health crisis response. As a result, while I have a moving story that I can share why this issue matters to me, I don't think that moving your heart and mind is the issue. I believe you want what's best for my son, as I do. What I also believe is we know, which is why you added funding to your budget proposal, that our current staffing policies and processes will not uniformly ensure the desired impact for all of our citizens experiencing a mental health crisis. We have seen all too painfully where the system has failed someone in our community needing this precise help. All of our good intentions did not stop Andrea Chirna, it's important to say her name, from dying. The best legacy we can leave her is a better community response for anyone facing a similar crisis in the future. During the budget cycle, your intentions were clear. Allocate funding to increase staff for a behavioral health specialist for crisis response, to improve the 911 response for people experiencing a mental health crisis. The need for this has not changed. If anything, we understand this need even more today than we did last fall. Our concern is that the current plan we are aware of, to allocate these FTE to three different departments with no clear connection to the crisis response 911, nor any accountability to show how these resources improved responses, or how the policy and processes could be improved, to leverage these resources will result in no meaningful change to impact. Even worse, we won't be able to know if this is true or not true, because we don't have any way of measuring it. We need city council to pause the hiring effort until it can assure the job descriptions, reporting structure, and operational ownership aligns to the goal of these positions. We also would like that the city council take on the governance role of ensuring there are measurements in place to give transparency and accountability to how these positions impact the public safety of members of our community experiencing a mental health crisis. We ask you to use this time strategically, and by time I mean this study session coming up, to strategically engage on how to align the implementation of these roles to the original intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Cousins, then Joy Randall, then Matt Gleason, then Michael Beard.
Like Janet, I call on the council to not to approve the plan for a community health program as presented to you in July, because it does not provide for alternative behavioral health response, and because it's structurally weak. Redmond is paying over $1 million more this year for its liability insurance because of a bungled armed response to a mental health crisis. How could we turn away from the potential to do things differently? Let me lay out one possible scenario for using the available resources, both to provide behavioral health first responders and to strengthen the Thrive program. In this scenario, the city starts with a joint public declaration from the mayor and council on a commitment to establish a new behavioral health crisis capability. As part of that declaration, the city reports that it's starting discussions immediately with the New Regional Crisis Response Agency, RCR, which is pronounced Racer, to be prepared to join that network when the opportunity opens. The city hires a coordinator for the Thrive program, a position located in human services, whose duties include leading a team of behavioral health first responders, as well as strengthening collaboration among the Thrive components. The coordinator takes responsibility for working with Racer on planning for Redmond's entry into the network. This includes analyzing Redmond dispatch data to estimate staffing needs, and acquiring the necessary software and equipment. Based on the results of the staffing analysis, two or three additional behavioral health first responder positions are established and filled. Reporting to the coordinator, their primary responsibility is responding to calls for help, and they have additional responsibilities to take referrals from within Thrive for follow-up and case management. The coordinator arranges for training for both the behavioral health responders and the police and fire personnel who will work with them. And then the program is launched when Redmond dispatches dispatchers begin to send responder-only teams on calls, or mixed teams of responder plus officer, or responder plus EMT. When Racer is ready for a new partner, Redmond is ready to be that partner. Racer grew out of an earlier collaboration called Radar, which developed its initial staffing plan with its own analysis of call data from the five participating cities. They started with two teams of behavioral health responders for the five cities combined, and coverage from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. The program now has 10 responder positions and is moving toward 24/7 coverage. In terms of funding, it started with grants and is now receiving general fund allocations from all the cities. Redmond would be a strong partner in this network by bringing three or four positions and the general fund allocations you have already committed. This scenario utilizes a resource that we've been neglecting so far in our discussions in Redmond, a program operating successfully in communities nearby. The five cities involved, which include Kirkland, are not someplace different. They're not someplace bigger, or scarier, or more urban. They're part of affluent suburban Seattle, as we are. Let's join them.
Thank you. Next is Joy Randall, then Matt Gleason, then Michael Beard, then David Morton.
Greetings, City Council, Mayor Burney. I've lived in Redmond for almost 18 years in the Overlake area, and as our city continues its tremendous growth, it gives us the vital opportunity to establish a structure of public safety and human services that meet our individual and collective needs for care. It's been very hopeful that you allocated funds for mental and behavioral health with the goal of forming a comprehensive community health program. What's disappointing, however, is how the current proposal you will consider does not address a comprehensive approach, not taking into account how many people will fall through the cracks in receiving the necessary support and care they need. For instance, a person who had asked for help to be taken to a mental health facility just this past November was instead handcuffed by police and treated as a suspect for allegedly taking $10 worth of food from a nearby store. Once questioned and released, it's understandable this person would simply just want to exit this interaction with police, which they did on a bus, without the help that they initially asked for. Maybe you've heard of this situation from the letters you received from the community asking for a more comprehensive approach that begins with providing an unarmed response by behavioral health crisis responders. How many more people that we aren't even aware of have fallen through the cracks like this, or have been too afraid to call for help because they do not want armed police to be the ones to respond? Care coordinators will not be able to follow up when the barrier is well ahead of where they can even offer the support in the first place. You may be aware of a current ACLU lawsuit challenging the discriminatory crisis response system in Washington, DC. They argue that the current approach to emergency response services violates the Americans with Disabilities Act by denying people with mental health disabilities effective and equal access to emergency care when police officers are sent as default first responders. I bring this case up because we must look towards what's happening across the country, with so many other cities taking steps that people with untreated mental health disabilities addressing that they are 16 times more likely to be killed by police than other individuals, or that police are 11.6 times more likely to use force against people experiencing serious mental health crises. I ask you all to reflect on these questions. Who in the community, specifically those most vulnerable and impacted, have you connected with to ask what crisis response care they want and need? Does that match what you believe people in crisis want from our emergency response system? What is your process for transparency and accountability that the community health program is truly addressing the safety of those experiencing a mental health crisis? What is a long-term vision you have to build up the community safety infrastructure needed with robust services so crises can be addressed before any need for law enforcement? How are you building the relationships to community-based programs that play significant roles in public safety? How can they also be supported to help in the scaling up of the care needed? This is a long process that takes time and attention, because we all know that one size does not fit all, and that is not realistic. I appreciate the initial steps in acknowledging the need by securing investment in mental and behavioral health for our community. We need to be at the pace of the people, not by legislative agendas, to ensure the meaningful impact needed to improve outcomes for people in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Gleason, then Michael Beard, then David Morton, then Linda Seltzer.
Hi, my name's Matt Gleason. I currently work in Redmond, former renter in Redmond. I'm now just across the border in Crossroads. I'm also an organizer with the Transit Riders Union, and am speaking, you know, with the weight of my organization as well. First, I, you know, you probably recognize me from Renter Protections. I think it was the last meeting before the recess. Looking forward to continuing to talk to so many of you about that and work on that. I wanted to give brief response to some things I heard after the comment period last time, maybe not still in your memory, I know it's been a while. But I did hear some discussion of having reached out landlords to understand, you know, were they raising rents more as a result of this legislation? I just wanted to quickly address that and encourage us all to sort of, you know, think a little bit more materially, maybe, about, you know, the way the incentives for how a landlord might respond in that situation, you know? They understand which side their bread is buttered on, so I would just, you know, I'm speaking with renters all the time and trying to bring them to speak in good faith in this forum as well. And so I just want, I want to remind us all, and let us have an understanding that, like, when we ask questions like that, we also should sort of maybe have expectations about how easy it is for, and how obviously beneficial it is for a landlord to say something like, actually, I was going to reduce rent, but as a result of these new requirements, I actually increased it significantly. It costs them very little, and I would just encourage in further discussions with them to keep that in mind and maybe have some sort of more standard of proof or something in those conversations. So that's it for Renter Protections this week, and I would also like to speak in favor of the community responder model. You know, as I'm sure you've seen from all the letters you've received, what happened to Andrea Chirna is horrible and completely irreversible. And so I think it's not sufficient to augment the existing program with, you know, mental health services that are available after the fact, that you can reach out to, you know, get case management on a longer term, you know? I think it's crucial to remember that the traumas that are inflicted on people, you know, during emergency response, whether that be, you know, something that causes lasting emotional damage, or something that is completely irreversible. I just think it needs to be considered that it's not sufficient to provide later resources, you know, if those if those issues are made worse, and care, the opportunity for care is foreclosed upon by actions that are taken during the crisis itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Beard, then David Morton, then Linda Seltzer. I'm sorry, is it Michelle?
No, it's Michael. You did it right.
It's Michael, okay. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Michael Beard. I'm a resident of the Lake Margaret Community in Duval, and a candidate for Fire District 45 Commissioner in the November election. I am an emergency nurse in Bellevue, and a substitute nurse for the River I am an emergency nurse in Bellevue and a substitute nurse for the Riverview School District. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer, and I am the wife of a firefighter. I have a vested interest professionally, fiscally, and personally in the success of our fire department and its services to our community. I'm here tonight to dissuade you, the council, from entering into a contract for services with Fire District 45. The proposal is being pushed by two members of the existing commission who are acting in blatant opposition to the expressed will of the community and Fire District employees. The local 2878 union members have voted unanimously for contracting with Eastside. I confirm this week that with a single exception, the hundreds of public comments on this issue have been in support for contracting with Eastside. In fact, on June 22 of this year, Redmond Fire Chief Shepherd submitted a letter to Duval that said, "While listening attentively to the proceedings, it became evident that the department and community members strongly desire to proceed with Eastside Fire and Rescue. For these reasons, we recommend the commissioners enter into contract negotiations with ESFR as a first choice." Redmond Fire is a respectable organization, but it does not provide services in the same manner as Duval, and some of those differences could be detrimental to our community. Redmond does not have a surface water program or water tender truck. They utilize ladder companies for vehicle extrication rather than more nimble engines. Our district remains a largely rural area, and those services are necessary for the safety of our residents. Duval Fire already has a well-established cooperative working relationship with Eastside. They provide like services particularly in wildland interface and surface water rescue, as well as vehicle extrication embedded in engine companies. They are already intimately familiar with a valley providing service to Lake Joy and Carnation. Furthermore, I question the wisdom of our rural district being managed by a city fire department. I'm concerned that the priorities of the city may outweigh the needs of our community. It is reasonable that the city of Redmond would protect its interests and foolhardy to put our district in that vulnerable position. I encourage this council to cautiously consider the cost of entering into a contract based on the will of two men who are in opposition of all vested parties. I believe these two commissioners are in dereliction of their duties to be, quote, "representatives of the citizens" and foreseeing that the fire department is properly funded and performing the necessary fire protection and life safety duties. It is my hope this council will recognize the inevitable trouble that will come with engaging an unwilling workforce and disappointed community. I respectfully ask that you listen to the multiple community members who have addressed this body, as well as the words of your own fire chief, and decline to contract with King County Fire District 45. Thank you. And just for note, I'm not running against any of those members, so there's no conflict there.
Thank you. Next is David Morton, and then Linda Seltzer.
Good evening. I'm David Morton. I support the approval of Consent Agenda Item 3, Acceptance of the Pollution Prevention Assistance Interagency Agreement. The Pollution Prevention Assistance Program's mission is to safeguard residents and the environment by helping small businesses reduce toxic chemical usage, safely manage hazardous waste, and prevent stormwater pollution. The city of Redmond will perform site visits and pollution prevention activities, targeting small quantity generators of hazardous waste, defined as entities generating less than 220 pounds of dangerous waste per month. These visits aim to eliminate or reduce waste and pollutants at the source to prevent environmental discharges. Furthermore, Redmond will launch the Product Replacement Program to encourage businesses to switch to safer alternatives, thereby minimizing toxic chemical use. Program elements include participation in training discussion panels and mentoring new specialists to ensure comprehensive coverage of checklist areas and timely issue resolution. Redmond will conduct technical assistance site visits to small quantity generators of hazardous waste and to businesses that may potentially pollute groundwater and stormwater. Follow-up visits are essential to address identified issues. These visits are conducted to confirm the thorough resolution of identified problems, especially high-priority environmental issues which could directly impact human health and the environment. Redmond will make technical assistance visits to automotive repair shops for the Degreaser Product Replacement Program, visits to businesses within critical aquifer recharge areas, or CARAs, for risk-based assessments, and to locally-owned multicultural small businesses to inform them of the program. In cases where high-priority environmental issues cannot be resolved, pollution prevention specialists are instructed to refer the issue to ecology or an appropriate agency, demonstrating the commitment to addressing serious concerns with potential regulatory actions if necessary. The list of high-priority environmental issues includes hazardous waste, mismanagement, improper disposal, storage, and more, emphasizing the importance of proper waste handling and storage practices. For conducting technical assistance visits, it's important to research the site's potential issues. Specialists should discuss opportunities for businesses to participate in green business programs and address spill response preparedness. The Product Replacement Program is aimed at eliminating persistent bioaccumulative toxic chemicals from use in commerce, preventing environmental contamination and protecting human health. Redmond plays a crucial role in meeting these goals by assisting businesses with transitioning to safer alternatives. Perchloroethylene and dry cleaning technology must be replaced, and non-toxic degreasers must be used in automotive repair facilities. Management and recycling of mercury is also important. Additional take-back and replacement programs are being considered, such as BPA-containing thermal receipts, flame retardants in gyms and recreational equipment, PCB-containing light ballasts in public schools, public school laboratory cleanouts, and PFAS-containing firefighting foam in fire stations and fire suppression systems. In conclusion, the Product Replacement Program will incentivize businesses to transition away from harmful chemicals and products and help safeguard the environment and human health. Please approve Consent Agenda Item Number 3. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Linda Seltzer. Two comments on the Parks Planning Report in tonight's agenda. The first is, when the senior center opens, it would be beneficial to mandate the availability of a salad bar luncheon option and not just reinstate the previous menu regimens. Fresh produce without condiments, marinades or added sugar are important to probiotic health, especially with plain water to drink. Seniors should have that choice available. Senior apartments don't have the food preparation or freezer space to store a great deal of fresh produce, and fresh produce in the stores is packaged in large quantities, so it results in food waste. And also, the prices have become very high for fresh produce, but if it's spread out over a large number of senior citizens, it would work better. So please consider mandating and including a salad bar option with the senior lunches. The second one is that the Parks Planning didn't really intake seriously suggestions that weren't originally in the multiple choices. And specifically, Bellevue has a heated therapy pool for seniors persons with disabilities, and aquatics for babies and toddlers. The Parks Report states that 27% of seniors in Redmond have a disability. Wave Aquatics does not provide a heated pool option, and last time I checked, they required signing up for a schedule like multiple classes the same time every week, without really providing for individual walk-in. And if that statement is currently incorrect, please let me know, but Wave Aquatics is really not fulfilling the mission for senior citizens. So thank you for considering those two comments on tonight's Parks Report.
Written comment has been forwarded to the council. No one has signed up to speak remotely, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to pull? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote starting with council. Actually, we could do a voice vote, because there's nothing pulled. So if all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all. Get back in the habit. Our next item of business is a staff report for the update to bike and scooter share pilot program. Jason Lynch, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of city councils. Tonight, Andy Garcia, Kim Keeling, and Francesca Liberty from Transportation and Planning Engineering will be continuing the micro-mobility conversation with a staff report. The staff report will include more details of what a permanent micro-mobility program could look like in Redmond. The main goal for tonight will be to receive your direction to move forward with a permanent right-of-way permit program. At this time, I'd like to turn it over for staff for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Going to share the presentation. Okay. So again, tonight's staff report is also known as the Scooter-Bike Share Pilot Program, and now we are calling it the Micro-Mobility Program. So next slide. So again, a little reminder about the goals of the program. When we first started the program, we wanted to improve travel choices and mobility and essentially create a first-last-mile choice for people in our community. And as Jason mentioned, the bulk of today's conversation will be our recommendations and what staff have come to research on what the choices of the permanent program would look like. We have updated the statistics of the program and included the last couple of months. And we will move through the statistics a little bit quickly, because they look a little bit the same. And the next slide. This timeline shows where we are in the timeline. We've been from where we started, and where we are, and where we are going. And our hope is to, with your recommendation from today, our goal is to be with a permanent program by spring 2024.
Good evening. So we shared these slides with you before with the statistics of the program, and we've updated them to include the June and July data. There's been very minor changes, a few increases. Excuse me. The daily trips have increased by one from the last time that you saw these slides. The average daily trips have gone up by three. The daily average trip distance has remained the same, which is the .08 miles. The daily average vehicle miles traveled has gone up by four. And then the total deployed scooters has gone up by 7,700. The total trips has gone up by 13,000, and the total VMT has gone up by almost 17,000. Total rides have increased by over 10,000, and the total service requests have gone up by two from the last time that you had seen these slides. And then, as I mentioned, the customer service requests have gone up by two. Those were both relocation requests, and they were resolved within two hours. Lime was notified. They're very responsive. And then for every 900 completed rides, there's been one customer service request for the life of the pilot program. And then this just shows you a breakdown of the customer service requests over the years during the pilot for this, and the city and Lime work together on operational changes throughout the pilot program to address concerns for usage and parking. And Lime conducts proactive foot patrol audits, and they immediately address improper parking, and they help reduce, excuse me, service requests by doing that. And then this slide here shows our number of scooters deployed and the completed trips from November of 2020 through July of 2023. Here, we've added, so the blue is the vehicles deployed, the orange is the completed trips, the thick yellow line is the median distant trip length in miles. And then we've added to this slide from the last time you've seen it, we've added the median, excuse me, the linear trend lines, excuse me, on here. So you can see over time, it's increasing over time, even with the cyclical changes throughout the year.
All right. So now that you've heard a bit about the data and the statistics of the current pilot program, we're going to talk a little bit more about what a proposed permanent program could look like in Redmond. This slide shows a summary of the overall characteristics that we would expect from a permit program. So what we are proposing would be a two-year permit with two additional two-year options for renewal. So if both of those options were taken, it would be a total of six years. This would allow for both continuity of the vendor selected and allow for flexibility from the city in case we would want to make updates to the program throughout the life of the permit. We would also have an overall program cap of about 400 total vehicles. This is stated in our pilot program right now, and currently, as those statistics you just saw showed, there's about 134 on average vehicles on the ground in Redmond each day. So we're not close to that 400 as of yet, but this would allow for flexibility and growth as the program would continue. Additionally, this pilot program currently does not have a fee structure. As we've researched other programs and best practices, we've learned that other cities do have a fee structure in their permanent programs. So our permanent program would propose a fee structure based on best practices in similar markets, and this is what we would like to discuss tonight and would appreciate your feedback on our proposed structure. So here we have a set of options that we've proposed for our permanent program. These show kind of some notes and the differences between one vendor or two vendors for our micro-mobility program. With one vendor, we would have up to 400 vehicles that would include both scooters and bikes. One vendor would allow for streamlined communication that would really facilitate a true partnership between the city and that chosen vendor. That's something that we've found to be really important, especially as we've learned, as we've researched best practices with other cities that have single vendors, that established partnership between the city and the vendor would be something that would be really valued. This would also allow for quicker customer service response time because of that continued partnership, and streamlined communication both between the city and the vendor, and between the vendor and folks using the selected app. This would also mean that there's only one application for people throughout the city to use, so there would be less confusion when choosing applications or choosing what type of vehicle they'd want to use. On the other side, the other option that we've looked at is two vendors. This would be up to 200 vehicles per vendor, so we're still keeping it at that total 400-vehicle cap. This would also include both scooters and bikes. Two vendors would require multiple Two vendors would require multiple apps required for the everyday customer, so that could cause a little more complication, but would provide for more variety. Two vendors could be easier to expand the scope of the program with other east side jurisdictions as the program grows and changes because the service area needs to be big enough to support multiple vendors. However, at this point, we've learned through our research that Redmond's size alone right now is best fit for one vendor at this point. The two-year initial permit duration with multiple renewal options would also allow for this flexibility if we were to expand this program or partner with other jurisdictions. You know, we could do so as those renewal options, you know, come up. We can move on to the next slide. Okay. So now, moving on to our recommendation, we would, ultimately, our staff recommendation is to move forward with a single vendor for the permanent micro mobility program. We recommend one vendor because of the ability to establish a collaborative partnership with our chosen vendor. As I've mentioned, we really value this partnership. With our vendor in this, we'd allow for a really streamlined experience for everyone involved. From the research we've done up to this point and looking at best practices in other similar markets, a single vendor program is the best size program for Redmond right now. And then, again, with this in mind, the two-year permit duration with multiple renewal options does still allow for flexibility, you know, as adjacent jurisdictions might develop micro mobility programs or as we continue to grow, we can look at that and change the program as those, again, as those renewal options become available. Our proposed fee structure would include a per-trip fee and/or a per-unit fee. That's something that we're, that's up for discussion here. And then a one-time administrative fee. All of these fees together offset the cost of staff time to manage the program. And now we welcome your feedback as we discuss what a successful micro mobility program means to you. I'll pass it back over to Vangie.
Now, it's the most important part of this discussion is hearing what's important to city council. We researched and thought about what could be successful for the city considering the square footage of the service area and thought about what, that's what went into our staff recommendation to you. What, as Jason said, the recommendation today or the, what we are waiting to hear is your direction if a permanent program moves forward and there's time on what are the parts and the final details. So I'd really like to move away today with whether or not a permanent program is moving forward.
Great, thank you. So love to hear from council, council president Forsyth.
Thank you. So just one quick question. The last time we talked, I thought the other neighboring jurisdictions don't have any programs currently, so the idea of hopefully growing and having two options really doesn't, it's not a part of the conversation, correct?
Right now.
Right now. Okay. So I'm definitely in favor of the one option, just for the ease of use for the community. And then interested in hearing more about the fee structuring and how that's going to work, but from what you just said, we will get to that later. But I'm in support of keeping the micro mobility plan, adding bicycles like we've recently done, and having one vendor.
And did you want the question about permanent? Ready to move forward with permanence?
Yes, I believe we need a vote. I believe, or do we need a proposal?
We don't have an actual, like, physical action in our agenda on this. However, I think we can take guidance from the council, and then we can move forward in the next business meeting with a more formal acceptance of a, of a permanent structure, if that is okay with the council. But I think we need to hear from the rest of the council members first. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much to the team for working on this and coming back with the new data. I am still interested. One of my colleagues last time asked about the location data that we realized the, the current pilot vendor has not been sharing with us about where these trips are occurring. So if we can ever see that, I would still very much love to see that. I'm in favor of a permanent program with a single vendor because that's what's absolutely best for the residents of our city. And I appreciate too the scale of it, knowing it's alike one hundred and thirty-seven now, and with two light rail stations opening in my neighborhood next spring, I know that there's going to need to be more and that we already have that growth built into that four hundred number. I really love that. On a final thing that's important to me is I think the title that's, that's almost overarching above the honeycombs here, which is safety. So I think that safety is represented in pretty much all of these, but it's, it's just something that's important in every single piece of the transportation and mobility processes we have here in Redmond, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a big fan of the creativity that comes from competition. I don't, I don't, it doesn't resonate with me, the obstacles to go to two vendors. Most of the people that appear to be using, especially the scooters, are young people, and I've never met somebody younger than me that can't handle two applications. I mean, they're just good at all the applications. So I think that even to the point of councilmember Stewart just now, we're not getting responsiveness from our single current vendor on some really important data, which is where are these being used, how are these being used? So I am probably a minority sitting up here, but I think that two vendor would actually, in the long run, be much more beneficial for the people in Redmond. And as this aspect of micro mobility grows, I think having two vendors and bringing the creative side of both the competition as well as the innovation would serve us in the long run. So I'm a fan of two vendors. The arguments for one vendor don't, don't strike me as all that important.
And are you interested in moving to a permanent?
Yes, yes, sorry. I meant to say that right off the bat.
Appreciate the thoughts. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much. I am very, very supportive of a permanent micro mobility program, and I am also in support of two qualified vendors for a few different reasons. One is for the opportunity for, to grow both of those programs and provide residents with competitive pricing and service quality. I'm hopeful that the relationship can be well managed with the city for both or at least one of those qualified partners, but it gives the option, in the long term, to transition between different partners over those two-year intervals. And that also provides options for our neighbors if they're developing future programs to connect with our, our micro mobility program. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So I also would like to see, I'm not hearing.
Hello.
Our mics just died.
Test, no.
Our mics just died.
Yep.
Everything.
Nope. Is it back? Are they back? Can you hear this now?
Test, test, test.
Yeah, I heard a pop.
You heard a pop? Well, I heard it, but I shouldn't know.
Testing, test, test, test.
They can't, I turned my.
Testing, test, test, test.
Hello.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you tell them we're going to take a five-minute recess? We're going to take a five-minute recess, for anyone who can hear that.
Testing, nope. Testing, testing.
Hello, yep.
Okay.
We have no TV, but we're back.
Yep, alright. Are we back to live?
We're live, yeah.
We are live, okay. When the Teams meeting comes back up, Councilmember Carson, it is your turn to speak.
I think he's waiting to... Okay.
Wonderful, so I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Carson.
Great, thank you. So, I kind of agree with a couple of council members who talked about the competition factor. Either in the, I think in either model, we can obviously employ competition, so figuring out which one is going to give us the better bid for the single model, or having to, I'm kind of agnostic as to which, but I do want there to be a, I don't want this to turn into a, once we pick one, we just keep renewing it all the time. So if we do the single model, I'd really like to see a hard stop at maybe a one-year renewal, so a total of three years, and then it must be bid. Absolutely no, you know, going past that without, I mean, I guess the council could, at that time, decide we like what we have, but I do think we need to be fair to other vendors if we go with the single model, so. And then, I do think that the data that we haven't gotten is really imperative because, and this is just my anecdotal observation, but I have never, usually when I see riders, especially scooters, and I've never seen anybody riding one of the Lime bikes yet in Redmond, so I don't know what that says, but it does seem that they are using them more for recreation than for actually getting from point A to B. It's obviously hard to tell, except when you have two riders kind of goofing around and, you know, on the scooter, so, which is what I see most. So I'm not sure it's necessarily solving the problem that we, that we think we have, that we actually do have, which is that last mile. I think the, as we talked about in committee earlier, the community van and making sure that Metro is doing last-mile service within the community, to me, that is more important than this pilot program or a permanent program. I'm super not high on this program at all. It is not, it's not, to me, delivered what I hoped it would. So I'm, I'm not that likely to support it going forward, but if we want to improve it, I think those are some of the things we need to do, is get some of that, get that data, figure out if it's actually solving a problem, or if people are just using it recreationally.
Thank you. We have, just have Councilmember Khan and Council Vice President Kritzer, and Council Vice President Kritzer had her hand up.
Thank you. So, a couple of questions have come up as my fellow councilmembers have been talking. One question is, in the two-vendor model, should we go out to bid and we just get one that's interested, could we basically allocate the two permits to them, essentially go to the single vendor? Or would we be restricted?
Hello, okay. Just to be clear, both versions, one vendor or two vendor, we would put out a bid for both. So there would be that, the competitive version, so thank you, Councilmember Carson, for clarifying that. And we were going to have another conversation, because there's the different pieces, the what that bid would include can have several pieces. So we brought, today was the first time you heard that there would be a fee schedule, so those are all pieces that we can discuss at a future committee meeting. So that's why we can talk about more things. We wanted to first hear the feedback today of where the program would go. But yes, the two-vendor would be if, because that, the key, what we wanted to share today was that 400-vehicle number cap, is that the two vendors would share.
Got it.
The amount.
But if there were, if say we wanted to go that one direction, but then we really only liked the proposal from one vendor, we could allocate all 400 to one of them anyway?
Mm-hmm, to the one.
Okay. Well, so I will just say that I am supportive of moving forward towards a permanent program. I think, especially with having a two-year contract with the renewal option, that gives us the opportunity, it's actually, two years is shorter than the amount of time this pilot has been going, so it's kind of, does give us always that opportunity to kind of think of it like a pilot, and to be able to watch it, watch how it's going. One thing that I would think about, and be curious, as we continue the conversation, is what will be the process for developing the criteria for renewal? So being able to track some of these issues that have come up during the pilot, and to be able to monitor them over time. Some of my fellow councilmembers have raised the issue of safety, which I do continue to hear some concerns about. And I do think, you know, especially based on the data that we collected, but then stopped collecting for a while from FIRE, it would be one that I would be interested in seeing us do renew collection on. I did hear recently about someone who had some head trauma riding on one of these scooters, and I think it is, it's important for us to make sure that we're not kind of missing some big part of the picture in terms of safety. But I also look at the data in terms of how many people have been riding it, and how it's been helping people get around, so I am supportive of that. The other thing I think we might want to think about in terms of the criteria is that we have heard a lot of issues from some residents around concerns of ADA accessibility and blocking public areas, and I know we've worked in the pilot on solutions for that. But would be another one that I think we would want to look, and I think that other cities that have dealt with different issues around this topic have been with not just ADA accessibility, but just overall, kind of how the vehicles are being stored over time, et cetera, and where they're being left in public right-of-way, and I know that we're going to be working on that. But it would be one that I think we'd want to track to make sure that we're getting those benefits, offsetting any sort of downsides, and we're trying to manage any of the unintended consequences. So, yeah, I think that's where I'm at. I probably lean towards the one vendor, just thinking about also, like, our own administrative management, and being able to build a better relationship with one vendor. And for residents, you know, if you're using a Lime bike, or a Lime scooter, or whatever the vendor is, and you have an issue and you want to put in a service request, it might be easier for residents to know that to, kind of, there's one space to go to. If we went the two-vendor route, then the city might want to provide some sort of centralized way for people to be able to share their feedback, which may be, you're already ahead on that, but I guess that would be my concern about the two vendors, although I am, I'm not super passionate on that one. I guess the positive side on the two vendors that I think some of my fellow councilmembers have brought up, I could get on board if it meant that we might likely get more bike share, because I would love to see more bikes out there. Thanks.
Before I take a question, I just do one thing to read after today, is that we, in your packet, you saw the existing pilot permit. So we do have what happens if the consequences of the, what is the word I'm thinking about, like, we won't allow some vehicles if some of the permit requirements aren't met for the person, the vendor who has this permit. So we have thought about some of the things, but as we've been hearing the way, the importance of the safety and accessibility, we will take some of these comments, and that could be wrapped into how the vendors apply for this, if we go with the one-vendor, two-vendor option, so.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Khan has let us know in the Teams chat that she doesn't have any questions or opinion at this time. Council President Forsythe.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation and depth on the topic. I had just kind of assumed, which I shouldn't have, that there would be a competitive bid process, as councilmembers had pointed out. So just wanted to point out, I'm very supportive of a competitive bid process for deciding if we go with one or two vendors. And I do believe that the information and the data that we've been asking for, that we haven't been able to get about trip locations, is critical. So I would ask that that get written into that bid process, that as a requirement, that they must give us that information, because it's something we've all expressed a lot of interest in knowing, so that we can really know, you know, who's using these, and what the trips look like, and if we're actually meeting the goals that we're trying to meet. So, that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? Councilmember Fields?
So how are you doing with all the, what you've learned from council?
Oh no, this is great. I mean, we were ready to hear all the comments, so. We provided the recommendation just because of the things that we were thinking about, but we were ready for either-or.
So, when I go back to the data that you presented, and I recall a lot of that from our prior session, and I don't remember if I commented on this, but the same thing occurs to me today as it did then. When we talk about meeting our goals, can you give us a staff version of what you think those goals are, and are we even in the ballpark of meeting some of those goals? The data doesn't provide, for me, sort of that context of, yeah, I can count the number of trips, I can, I know how many people are riding scooters around, but I don't know, you know, and we're going back here, what, four or five years when this first came up, I don't know if we've even moved the dial towards those goals of first mile, last mile, helping affordability, commuting, getting cars off the road, some of those things. So I don't know if you can do that tonight, or can do it at some point in the future, but I think a context assessment, as opposed to just the data from the expertise that you all have, would be really helpful.
Well, when I read the current transportation master plan, it said to provide options and more for different modes. And so, on a weekend, on a summer weekend, in the spring, I see a lot of people riding scooters. So I think, just by that, I think it is successful, because I see people riding. I do agree that, I'd love a little bit more data about the where. We do have the data about where they're starting and where they're ending their trips. What we'd like a little bit more data is where those routes are, you know, like which route. But it's been kind of amazing, we see, we see a big picture of, like, a lot of the lines, and it's been kind of amazing to see, it's along Willows, it's in, all over the city, in the neighborhoods. And that's probably why, when I first started, we heard a lot of the complaints of, and I think we have done a lot of work to address how to reduce those complaints. We probably can never completely get rid of them, but we have worked hard at finding ways and the pathways, and I think that's why I say, when we provide that RFQ or just the bid of how any vendor can have that work in Redmond, that's how they show how they're going to be responsive, how they're going to be safe. That can look like a lot of ways. Provide training, how can people ride more and feel less scared. So I'm hoping to get to work on all of that, and you will see that in a future study session.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that conversation. And for me, the most compelling piece of data in this mix, and I have been a user of the Lime scooters, is the median trip is .8 miles. That means 50% of the trips are actually shorter than .8 of a mile, but maybe it's through an area that is, doesn't feel safe to walk, or any number of other things. I certainly know when I leave a group fitness class, need to get to a meeting across town, but don't really want to walk, because I just left the group fitness class, you know, it really does help get around. So 50% of the trips are less than .8 miles, and to me, that is a signal that we are hitting this, this first and last for us. Thanks.
Council Vice President?
I guess I'd jump in if we're sharing our favorite data points, is that for me, when I look at 238,000 vehicle miles traveled, equivalent, or I guess, on these vehicles, versus thinking about 238,000 vehicles' miles traveled in single occupancy vehicles, or, you know, the type of alternative, right, then that's a lot of carbon emissions that we're saving, a lot of people that hopefully we're keeping, taking cleaner modes of transportation. So, and hopefully, a lot of those folks that are potentially connecting to other types of multimodal transit as well. And so I think that also shows a lot in terms of what our public is using.
Actually, can we show the chart, my favorite chart? Was the, I've talked about this. I was particularly intrigued about this chart, that, you know, change is hard for a group of people, and why we showed this chart with the trend line in yellow is it went from .6 miles to almost a mile. And we can't guarantee the who are making the rides, but it's getting closer and closer to that one-mile ride, and what I would love to see is that it level off eventually, or get even higher. So hopefully, more and more people see it as, and we've talked about it amongst our staff, is that it feels like nobody thinks about it anymore. That it'll maybe be one day that someone is thinking about going to the grocery store and knows that they can take a scooter without thinking, do I have to take this app and use this app, and that there's just a scooter there. But we don't know until we make it permanent.
Thank you so much. So it sounds like you have a majority council who are interested in making it permanent, and I think that it sounds like there definitely is consensus on making sure there's a competitive bid process. Whether it's one or two feels like a little more gray, if I understand the process forward. If you, we can discuss if you need to bring a resolution forward to move forward to make this permanent, and have the council approve that, if that's what we need to do, and then we'll continue to have this conversation about what the process looks like after that. Is that, I'm seeing nods from council. Did I read that properly? Okay.
Yes.
Do you need anything else from the council?
Thank you for the conversation, and I just wanted to just reiterate our next steps, that I think we still can meet our timeline. So, thank you for the conversation.
Right. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Our next item of business is a staff report for the Redmond 2050 economic vitality, park, housing, and centers policies. Jason Lynch, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item. Again, thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Long Range Planning staff are here to provide a scheduled update for the Redmond 2050, and introduce final drafts for four comprehensive plan elements and one functional plan. Tonight, we're asking council to identify discussion issues related to any of the field drafts for discussion in the next study session. We're also asking council to provide identification of the discussion issues related to the parks, arts, recreation, culture, and conservation, P-A-R-C-C element and plan. And this is a plan that we have to finish by the end of 2023. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Churchill, who will introduce staff and take us through the rest of the staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let's see if I can advance the slides. Okay, and thank you, Jason, for the introduction. I'm joined by Glenn Coyle, Ian Leftcourt from the Long Range Planning Team, and by the Parks Planning Manager, Caroline Chapman tonight. Our objectives are to build a common understanding on the schedule for the rest of Redmond 2050, and also, as Jason said, to identify questions or issues for discussion later this month at study sessions, especially with, at the priority on parks-related issues because of the year-end deadline that Jason mentioned. So this slide shows the remaining schedule for Redmond 2050, and if you can believe it, we're about 13 months from being done. And it's been going on for a couple of years, so that feels like it's very soon. We have a lot of work to do, but we're getting there. I want to highlight a significant change since the last time you saw this, and this is that staff is now planning to bring forward almost all of the Redmond 2050 components together for adoption in the fourth quarter of 2024. That does not mean that you're going to review it all right at the end. We're going to still review it sequentially, because there's too much to review all at one time, but it means the ordinances will all happen together in 2024. Previously, we had planned to bring a set of policies and regulations forward for adoption at the end of this year, and then the remaining policies and regulations in 2024. We are proposing to change that for a few reasons. First, there was a real sense of urgency among people doing development and overlay, that that plan needed to be updated and updated immediately. That sense of urgency has abated significantly, due largely to external economic factors. A second reason is that moving final action to 2024 will give everyone ample opportunity to study the supplemental draft EIS and everything that's disclosed in there, and that'll be published this month, as well as a final EIS later in November or December. Third, we've heard from stakeholders that multiple changes makes things feel like a moving target, not quite sure where things are, and so adopting everything, or almost everything, all at once will make it very clear what's changing and when. And finally, there are some changes to zoning districts, actually a lot of those, which is not the topic for tonight, but that's, it requires a fair amount of backend work in the permitting and geographic information systems. If we can consolidate that work into one work effort, it will be more efficient. There are a couple of downsides that I want you to know about. The first is that if we make this change, we can't decide later to change back, because time marches on. So if we decide to do this all at the end of 2024, that's when it will have to happen. Second is that it would delay for about, you know, a little less than a year, I guess, the implementation of things like the update to the overlay plan, which had been planned to be updated at the end of 2023. But as I said, we're not hearing a lot of urgency around that at this time. On balance, we think it's best to move forward toward a single set of ordinances at the fourth quarter of 2024. But there are exceptions, and one of those is the Park Plan, which is on tonight's agenda, because there is a due date set by the Recreation and Conservation Office at the state to get that done by the end of 2023. We also have a water system plan update that's in the works, and we expect that will be ready for council action in the first half of 2024, but it will be in alignment with all the growth projections for Redmond 2050. Otherwise, what this slide shows is that we have final drafts prepared for early elements. Those are the ones that are on your agenda tonight. We first reviewed content for these elements back in early 2022 with the council, and have been revising and refining those since, based on community input throughout those months and years. The schedule shows that the review of the later elements, which are still called Phase II elements, because they started later, and they'll be the later ones for council to review, that's underway and will continue into 2024, culminating in a series of public hearings at the Planning Commission, and reviewed by the City Council before everything is packaged together in the fourth quarter of 2024. We'll actually be back next month, in October, with much more information about Phase II, so stay tuned for that. And with all of that as introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Caroline Chapman, who's going to walk us through the Park Plan.
Or begin to walk us through the Park Plan, yes, thank you, Jeff. So for the work of both the Park Element and the functional plan, staff on the Long Range team and the Parks staff have worked really closely together throughout this entire process, to really ensure that the policies and goals and actions in both of these places are moving forward together and reinforcing one another, and also, not only meeting the vision of Redmond 2050, but taking advantage of the great input that we received from the community throughout this process. So we're really pleased with how this plan and element have really coalesced around four main goals you see here, of expanding access to our parks and recreation, innovating for the future and the growth that is anticipated, protecting the natural environment, and building strong communities through programs and art. The Park Plan and Element will meet the requirements of the Recreation and Conservation Office, that is a Washington State office, and we do need to be current with them in order to apply for and receive grants. And it is also consistent with the guidelines in the Growth Management Act. The plan itself includes an inventory of existing facilities. It's going to make estimates on demand for the park system, lays out our proposed capital projects for the next six years, and a list of suggestions beyond that, and will act as a guide for our department. as a guide for our department, the Parks Department, over the next six years. So some of the highlights within the park element and the plan are actions around designing for universal access, both in retrofitting existing parks and facilities and planning for inclusive designs in new parks as they come online. The plan also considered Redmond 2050's growth projections, and this was a big part of our own analysis and making recommendations for how we're going to be able to meet the demands that that anticipated growth is going to put on our current facilities and where we may need to expand to serve or prioritize investments in high-demand areas or areas that might be currently underserved to help improve our current level of services. And some of that includes actions or suggestions in policies around creative partnerships or working with development agreements to get some of this work done. Some other areas to highlight in the plan are around opportunities to expand volunteerism in a way that's going to further our goals of sustainability and building those strong communities. The plan also directs staff to work collaboratively on citywide goals and adopted plans such as the ESAP, expand and enhance our tree canopy, and implement best management practices to be resilient in the face of climate change. So I look forward to hearing more about the questions that you may have about that plan, and we will be back to speak with you more about it. But for now, I will pass it to Glenn to talk about the economic vitality element.
Hello, council members and mayor. I am Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner and Long Range Planner, and here to discuss the updated economic vitality element. The economic vitality element has been significantly revised to ensure consistency with the Redmond 2050 themes of equity, inclusion, sustainability, and resiliency. The update has been revised to align with the city's economic vitality goals of a sustainable and resilient economy, a high quality of life, and a diverse workforce and business community. Whereas the existing element focuses on land use, regulations, and infrastructure financing, this element has been expanded to include policies on equity and quality of life, mitigating displacement of legacy and vital community businesses, preserving manufacturing and industrial land uses, addressing barriers created by high costs of housing, land, and space, supporting a diverse workforce, and continuing efforts to achieve a sustainable economy. As part of the community engagement process, we heard many comments and suggestions on how to approve economic vitality in the city of Redmond, and we added and revised policies to support that, including policies around education and workforce development, neighborhood-based businesses, use of public space for private uses, business diversity, and business retention. So with that, please let us know if there are any issues regarding this element to be discussed at the upcoming study sessions. And I will turn it over to Ian on the housing. Thank you.
My name is Ian Lefkort. I use him pronouns. I'm a senior planner, and we're talking about housing today. And when we look at the first components of the key updates, it really kind of falls into two buckets. There's policy to help create the outcomes that our community desires, that are required of us by regional statutes. And the other component is kind of showing our work, providing the data that helps provide a foundation for many of those compliances and policy directions. So if we look at the first two, we'll see those are kind of very targeted at our equity outcomes. This is a core component that we have heard from all of our stakeholders. It's one of the three themes, as Glenn mentioned earlier, for the Redmond 2050 update, and it's a key component of what the city of Redmond is as a welcoming city. We not only highlighted and went above and beyond what some of the regional requirements were for these policies, but we also symbolically placed them first. We're trying to highlight that equity is an actionable item for us to pursue. Now, as we move down, we'll see that we have two house bills that are emphasized, but just as a little background, there are many bills that have come out in the last few years that touch on various components of housing. The first is addressing affordable housing need. That's 1220. This effectively has many substantive impacts to how jurisdictions plan housing. Two of the most relevant for this component are creating adequate provisions to serve housing for all economic segments of our community. And related to that is we have to show our capacity for that work. We have to show how our housing targets can align to serve specific households earning certain area median incomes. One of the ways we can pursue that is by creating housing diversity, which was also a state bill from House Bill 1110 on middle housing. This includes a bunch of stuff about providing definitions for middle housing, creating frameworks for how many housing units go per lot, many components. And so we wanted to make sure that our policies would enable future staff work to complete and fulfill these obligations. Complete neighborhoods is an ongoing theme throughout our work, and it represents being able to get most of the things that you want for a quality of life on a day-to-day basis to be readily available to you relatively near you. So how does this relate to housing? For this specific component, we're looking at non-residential uses in traditionally residential areas. One example of the outreach we conducted is kind of this, the spectrum of permanence for non-residential. So on the one hand, you got, let's say, a real permanent structure like a pharmacy, and it's only a pharmacy. And then on the other end, you have very temporary things, like a food truck. As you might imagine, food trucks were quite popular. We're hoping to integrate those pieces throughout the regulatory updates of this Redmond 2050 project. And then finally, that last one, the updated housing data in the technical appendix, as I mentioned earlier, that's a lot of showing our work for fulfilling 1220. And when we looked at our engagement efforts, what we heard tracks pretty closely to what the direction at the outset of our preliminary engagement revealed. Affordability, more housing choices, more ownership opportunities, and more housing units with multiple bedrooms. On the right, you'll see that we pretty much across-the-board added policies that are directly focused on this. And it's important to recognize that many of these pieces, the threads line together, right? Like if we create more housing choices that are near recreational amenities, we offer more equity because it's easier to age in place or have more sustainable outcomes because then you can lower combustion vehicle miles traveled. These all tie together. And so we're really excited to continue this engagement because it's one of the, it's one of the pieces that our community members are very excited to chat about. We've had very good conversations about these pieces. And the last topic we will share tonight is about centers.
All right. Good evening again. I want to credit Becky Fry for this work. She couldn't join us this evening, and she would do this better, but I will do it in her stead. We're updating the centers element in two parts. The first part is the update to general centers policies and overlay policies. And the second part is downtown. The second part's underway, but that's not what's before us tonight. Many of the updates, the general centers policies and overlay policies are about strengthening the connection between the element and the Redmond 2050 themes that you've heard about already. For example, the updated element highlights equitable transit-oriented development. This is an emphasis in Vision 2050, and so it needs to be an emphasis in our plan as well, and also, of course, aligns with our own local priority of equity and inclusion. When we held small business focus groups earlier in the update process, we heard a lot about concern about businesses being able to stay in Overlake. And so a key update is to address small business retention and anti-displacement, and that dovetails nicely with some of the policies in the economic vitality element that also address that. People come from all over the world to Redmond, and many specifically to Overlake, to work and become part of the community, and the updated policies honor that. The updated policies also emphasize universal design, again in alignment with the theme equity and inclusion, and a recognition that our centers, as centers of opportunity, should be places where people of all ages and abilities can thrive. And finally, the policies have been updated to reflect the growth targets for Redmond Like Ian said, kind of the changes that we made for centers, like housing, track very much kind of what we heard from the community and what some of the key updates are. There are a handful that I want to mention. Spoke earlier about equitable transit-oriented development, which relates closely to the first two rows in the table on this slide. Another theme that we heard was reducing the number of land use and zoning categories, which we're implementing partially through policy in sub-area maps and simplifying kind of the geography of Overlake. But part of that will need to wait for regulatory updates because that's where some of the land use categories and zoning categories live. And in the drafts, those simplifications are there. They're just not part of the policy package this evening. And finally, we heard that Overlake must be a welcoming place for families and seniors. This is part of universal design and has been incorporated both into the vision statement for the neighborhood and then also in the policies. So next steps, the immediate next step is that we have time reserved at your study sessions this month to discuss issues related to any of these updates, any of the ones that we talked about this evening. And so we would like to prioritize, again, the parks-related issues so that those revisions can be made and a final park plan and park element can be brought to you for action before the end of the year. Then next month, we'll be back with a first review of the Phase Two policies. That's everything you haven't seen yet, from annexation to utilities and everything in between. And then in November, we intend to come back with the park element and the park plan for final action from the council. That concludes our presentation. We are happy to take note of discussion issues tonight, or if you would like to send them by email, say by the end of the day, Thursday maybe, so that we would have adequate time to prepare for the study session, that would be great.
Thank you all so much. So I will take comment, verbal comment right now, or you can email them to Mr. Churchill as well. Would anyone like to share some comments this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and kick us off. Usually when I do this, I end up at the wrong level of questions, so I do apologize if that ends up being the case. Thank you all for these awesome updates, and I look forward to the conversations later this month. I'll just run through a few of them, and again, we can hear more updates in the study sessions. So, Mr. Churchill, when you started, I didn't understand the, why the Overlake pieces were delayed. You spoke of an external pressure that no longer exists, but I'm not sure what that is, or I wasn't able to follow that part of the story. And one of the things I was most curious about coming into the fall was the economic analysis of those Overlake incentives. I thought that was something we were going to see soon, and I just wonder if that's still the case as we test those incentive packages. Of course, on the housing element, I'm very interested and dove deeply into the analysis of our multifamily tax exemption and inclusionary zoning and saw some of the recommendations there. So looking forward to hearing how that information or that analysis informed some of the latest thinking on the housing element. And Ms. Chapman, for the park plan, we had 700 and some odd pages, but I don't think we actually had the latest version of the park plan. So I wasn't sure if it was the one that's like listed on the website for public review, but if you wouldn't mind sending that out prior to our packets on Friday, that would be super helpful. Last time council looked at the park plan, I do remember there weren't, you know, tons of questions, so I imagine we're on the right path. Do, 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 do. I will leave it at that for the moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Just a quick clarification. When is the final EIS due?
Final EIS should be out in late November or December.
Okay. And then did we move forward on one of the two models, like the wheel and spoke versus the more targeted development in those options?
Yes. So the supplemental draft EIS that should come out in the next couple of weeks evaluated an alternative that we're calling the preferred alternative that is a lot like the centers and corridors model in terms of distribution, but with slightly different numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. I have quite a few things that I'm interested in hearing about next week or two weeks from then. So for the planning and for the jobs and the TOD and the flexibility and the code, I'm interested in flexibility around, I think I brought this up before, converting office spaces to housing. It seems like an economic vitality option as well, opportunity as well. And then we recently received an email about the job centers numbers being centered around Overlake and being so much higher when there's already a high capacity of jobs up there, and how that shift from some of those jobs being in the downtown area, how that happened. So if we could just touch on that again, that I think would be helpful. And then I'm interested around, I didn't see it in this section, around the passive house exceptions for housing for green build and the design review exceptions. If I missed it, I apologize. And also interested in the UC10 affordability priorities. If you could touch on the design materials falling, the design materials being an affordability priority, it felt a bit problematic is maybe we're encouraging folks to use subpar design materials. So if you could just highlight that one for me, I would appreciate it. And then, yeah, you guys provided a lot of incredible documentation, so thank you for all of that. It was a lot to go through. I know you've been very, very busy. And at the beginning, you had mentioned how much it was, and I was glad to hear you say that because I felt overwhelmed by all the amount of information. And if there is at any point a document that could just be the policies for just that, just to be able to look at that, that would be really helpful. I don't want to add more to your plate because I know you have a lot going on, but that was my gut reaction was I just want to see the policies themselves. But you've got a lot of great information, a lot of research into it, and I appreciate all the work.
Councilmember Fields?
A couple things that are sort of similar to what other council members have said. First one, though, with respect to parks, I think that Redmond historically has done a pretty remarkable job on all of our recreational and park facilities, with the exception of our urban centers. And I'm in particularly, I don't, it feels like downtown Redmond, there's not a whole lot of options left. But with respect to green space and open space and avoiding heat spots in some of our urban centers, I'd like to know more about what we are planning to do with Overlake and Marymore and also downtown. I'm very concerned about, as we move forward in the global crisis of climate change, we're likely to see heat spots of 120, 125 degrees in some areas. What are we doing to mitigate that? I'd like to learn more about that. To Councilmember Stewart's point, and then, and I'm abstracting a little bit here, and then Council President Forsyth, about level of detail or level, what is the right level? I see in the presentation a lot of aspirational goals that we've discussed many, many, many times. And those, I don't have any argument with those aspirational goals. And then we jump to a bunch of detail, and it's difficult for me to understand the context again. When we talk about what we're doing to meet those aspirational goals, I think it would be helpful for council to understand not only the policies, but what the expected impact of certain policies are, or lack of policies even. So when you come back, if we could see some mid-level of your expertise, again, I know I said this in the previous agenda item, but I'm also going to say it again. Your expertise is really important to us, and it provides us guidance and, in fact, inspiration in what we do as decision makers. So jumping from here's our problem and here's what we'd like to see solved to a level of detail that's pretty difficult doesn't always lead to the best outcomes or the best decision-making capabilities. So that's my comments.
Councilmember Critzer?
I would echo similar comments from my fellow council members in terms of how we discuss some of this. Obviously, it's very median, exciting. This is, I think, some of the most important work that we get to do on council. I think especially in terms of the housing policies, it would be great to be able to understand, because between the comp plan and then eventually the zoning changes that we'll make, there will be some changes to the way that our community develops, that's the whole idea. To be able to understand from you all, these, in these new recommendations, or the recommendations that we're at currently, specifically on our kind of different levers around affordable housing or tools to be able to increase housing choices, you know, what are some of the ones, kind of to make that connection between, here's what the comp plan says right now, and then here's how that's going to correspond to likely zoning code changes? So I think it helps us, it would help us to understand the key pieces of what we're putting in here, since in the comp plan, we put some of these nice phrases, as Councilmember Fields put it. And they are very powerful in the end, in terms of what they're going to lead us to. And I wouldn't want us to approve a plan that has a bunch of phrases, but then later we go to change the actual zoning code, and we all say, oh, that's what that meant. And the community says, that's what that meant. So I do think that finding a way to translate that, to say, this is what these choices are really going to look like. And I think tying it back to some of the great analysis that's been going on, I, like Councilmember Stewart, am very interested in what we learned from some of the analysis we did around our inclusionary zoning. And I've been interested, as we've been in these conversations, and I've been talking with community about what is that right level of where we set inclusionary zoning versus other incentives, and like to know, you know, what exactly we've landed on and have that robust discussion about where we'd be at, and then what are those different trade-offs that we would be considering? Should we take those actions? I think similarly, I'm really excited about the discussion around creating some more economic vitality within neighborhoods, some of the complete neighborhoods discussion. And I know we began that actually with a great discussion with our Planning Commission, but I'm just interested to be able to hear a little bit more of the details in terms of what's changing and what would we expect, which I think you mentioned that you will cover. So those are some of the areas I'm interested in. And then last, just on the timing of how this plan gets done, I am interested to know, I tried to look through the Planning Commission report, but I, there was a lot in there, on, to know what, if it was documented, what they thought about the change in timing on doing it all at once versus doing it in two parts. And I'd just like to understand better about the impacts and whether we still at this point have a decision to make about whether we might still do the Overlake plan earlier, because it's not clear to me whether that's something that we might want to make a different decision on. And then, I do have a couple of questions on park plan, but I think I will email them to you, because they're little smaller, various questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Carson, sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay.
I saw you earlier, and then I...
I knew you'd eventually get to me. I'm way down here, hard to see. So I had two questions about, really in the kind of the jobs as Council President enumerated in her time. So how is the new world of working from home being accommodated or being taken into account with our jobs numbers? Is this where the jobs are actually located, or is it where the company that the jobs are located? So you get my question, because obviously you can accommodate a lot more jobs if some, if half the people are working from home. It changes how many jobs you can actually accommodate on a campus, or, you know, that kind of thing. And then, secondly, I'm very curious about the methodology we used to arrive at the jobs numbers, because it's clearly not correlated to the housing units being built, because the one is much more than the number of housing units, and the other is nearly, well, not quite half, maybe two-thirds of the number. So I'm curious, is it, is it existing jobs correlated out, or is it, because the way I look at it, you may have an area where there are many jobs now, but it can handle a lot more jobs. So I guess those numbers, I have a lot of problems with. I'd like to know how we got to them, because I don't, I just, I don't have faith that they're the numbers we should be striving for. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? And to repeat, they said, if you have other comments or questions, get them in by Thursday, correct? Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much. Thank you, team, for that as well. Appreciate it. See you at the study session. Our next item of business is ombuds report, and Councilmember Carson is both, it looks like both August and September.
I left my mic on for a reason.
There you go.
So, yes, we had, whoops, excuse me, we had many, many things come to us over the last month. We had a, an emailer ask about a ticket that had been, I guess, put into our customer service ticketing system about a year ago, and staff has responded to that, so it's, it has been dealt with. I just made sure that, I just kind of followed up and made sure that if there was anything else I could do, I'd be happy to look into it for them, but they did not reply. So. And then we got an email about a drowning, a potential, a drowning that was avoided at Idlewood Park. And, you know, we do not have lifeguards on duty for a couple of reasons at the moment, but, and so I think all of you got the comments that that person sent. And then we had a couple of emails about leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers in Redmond. The city is evaluating for our own use, but we, obviously, most companies that do landscaping and also the city that has to do a lot of this kind of maintenance, needs the, you know, the ones that are industrial-powered and can last a long time. So those are currently very heavy and difficult to, kind of unwieldy to wear. But we are, our Parks and Rec Department is on that and is looking at, hopefully, the next generation will be kind of purpose-built for that kind of thing. And they were also advocating for us banning gas-powered leaf blowers, which we've obviously talked about at a study session or two. We had an emailer that, oh, talking about homeownership or housing ownership in downtown Redmond. And this is one of the things that was just mentioned in our previous briefing there. And one of the things that I think we, and we have advocated in the past for, is for condominium reform in terms of liability. It's not the only thing that keeps builders from building them, but is, seems to be a prominent one. And so that was an interesting conversation with that emailer. We also had someone asking us to remove our, remove signs, election signs. And I informed them that was just the primary, it was not the general election. So certain candidates would certainly need to remove their signs, but most of the ones I saw are still people that are in the hunt. So. And then, we had an emailer that, who tried to contact us at Derby Days and then eventually emailed us. And I apologize for not, for us not having folks to hear their concerns at Derby Days, but we were obviously shorthanded with council members. And it was regarding leaf blowers, again. And then we had one emailer that was asking us, and I'm still kind of waiting for, and actually, I probably need to send it to our Public Works folks, because I think that's, it's probably theirs, but I thought initially was our police generator, but it was the one out behind City Hall, so, about the emissions that are coming out of it. So. And then, we had another one about our urban fire preparedness, and the chief was able to get me the information, and I think he responded to the emailer. And then we also had one about a crosswalk signal near the Microsoft building at Revon Town Center, and public works staff jumped into action very quickly and got, did an evaluation and was able to get him a response quite quickly. So that was terrific. And then another emailer invited all of us council members and the mayor to participate in something that they do, and that would be something that each individual council member could choose to or not participate in. And then we had a number of, of community responder program emails that were kind of programmatic in their content, and I've responded to all but a couple of them now. And then we also, that happens to be the one meeting that I missed, that, to hear the presentation. So I'm going to go back and watch it and make sure that everything is accurate with that. And then we also had someone email about someone sleeping in public, and I forwarded it to our homeless outreach person, and she was right on it. So that got dealt with immediately. We also had someone email about nighttime construction noise, and I, it was tough because, I mean, we obviously have pretty stringent rules about making noise at night, and only in rare circumstances should it happen at night. And usually, it has to be approved by council. But even at that, so as far as I know, we don't have any of those situations happening right now. So I advise, you know, let us know when and where you hear it and what direction it's coming from, and we can look into it. But without that, it's kind of difficult to respond. So. And then, we had someone email about the forum that One Redmond is putting on for, the candidate forum. And I responded and said, you know, this is an organization that while the city is a member of, we do not, we do not govern what they do or say, and this is, this is a longstanding thing that most chambers of commerce does do in election years for local office. And then lastly, we had an email from a resident that basically was just outlining what they wanted to see in an elected official, and so I've responded and just thanked them for that. Councilmembers can read it for themselves, and that's it.
Thank you so much. Are there any other ombuds items to show tonight? Councilmember Fields?
First, I want to congratulate Councilmember Carson on getting through a very long list. It looks like you did not have the month off. So I apologize in advance for not forwarding this email to the mayor and the city clerk. Kind of put it aside, and I just remembered it earlier today. I got an email from the wife of one of the firefighters who were dismissed. The title of this email is "Redmond Corruption." Not sure I agree with that title, but I am a little bit concerned about what she has pointed out. And when I did a motion on overruling the executive order from the mayor on dismissing the firefighters, I sent an email to the city clerk thanking her in advance for distributing this to my colleagues on city council. This email that I received is the result of a public disclosure request, which shows that the actual routing did not go to city council, it went to the mayor, then it went to the city attorney, and then it went to the COO. My understanding of the process, especially from a courtesy perspective by a council member, is that we get, when we are going to do a motion at a business meeting, that we send it in advance in order to prepare city council. I don't know if this email that I'd sent back in whenever it was, actually went to city council, but I am a little bit concerned that it went to everyone in the mayor's office and not simultaneously to city council. So if I have the process wrong, I would like for someone to explain that to me. And I would also like to be able to get back to the person who sent me this email and said, yes, the process didn't work this time, or in fact, that is how it works. And I can forward this email to the city clerk and the rest of council.
Thank you. Are there any other? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to Axton Burton and the organizers of Redmond Pride for a wonderful festival this past weekend. It was, once again, an absolute delight. In the month of August, I also heard from a resident with concern about the 90th Street Pond, and after talking to Director Burt, it does sound like public works staff visited with that resident to learn more about their concerns, and it has been addressed. I also wanted to thank the parks staff for just an awesome summer of fun. So in addition to Derby Days, the Rockin' on the River concerts, including one during a council meeting, which was also very fun, and the Art Walk this year, the parks staff just, every time I saw them, Amanda and Zach running around, making sure that residents of Redmond had awesome experiences this summer. At the Art Walk, we had a council booth. One of the things that struck me about the booth and the conversations I had there was, I tended to ask people if they are from Redmond in order to judge how difficult a trivia question I should give them about the city of Redmond. And so many of the responses were actually, no, I live in Seattle. So I don't know what was done to promote this event outside the city, but lots of visitors from outside the city showing up for that city event. So really appreciated that. Had a resident stop by the booth to express interest in more downtown park playgrounds, and because of the great conversation pieces that the trivia ended up being, also helped a lot of people learn about Farrow McWhorter Farm, because a lot of people haven't actually been out there. So I hope they had a chance to go out and visit. So thanks again for a wonderful summer. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer?
Thank you. I also have had the chance to talk with a lot of residents recently, a couple different topics that have come up. One is, a lot of discussion around the desire for first-last-mile transit options. So exciting to date to talk about both the micro mobility as well as our new community van project that's going to be coming up. And also, a lot of requests just for more bus service, like a lot of people saying they wish they could just take those more easily. So something to be looking out for. I also have heard a lot of discussion from various folks in the community, really interested in working towards a cultural arts center, especially some folks that are engaged with the One Redmond Foundation on some planning around that, and interest in the community on that. I also had talked with a couple different people about tenant protections and some of the concerns that have been raised publicly to us and also via email. Also talked with some people about the community responders issue and their thoughts on our upcoming study session. We heard some feedback tonight. And then, finally, I also talked to some people about their excitement about the Rainbow Crosswalk. Was really amazing to cut the ribbon on Friday. And again, actually, shout out to Axton Burton, as well as Jingjing Wang, the artist who designed that amazing piece. I would say a piece of feedback that I think we can incorporate going forward is to make sure, as we do any sort of ceremonies, you know, where community members have been really active in organizing and asking us to do things, is just as much as possible to have their voices really be at the center and to showcase those perspectives as part of that celebration. I think this, it was really amazing to see the whole community come out. The other thing that I did see some discussion of online that I wanted to directly address here is about kind of this false, false choice that it seems some people set up. here is about kind of this false, false choice that it seems some people set up between whether we could have a rainbow crosswalk or fill potholes. And I just wanted to let the public know that, yes, we used art funding to be able to fund this crosswalk. And we also have a really robust pavement management program and plan. So we can both fill potholes and we can have public art that creates a more inclusive community and answers the call from community members. And I'm really proud to be in Redmond in a place where people really feel that. I was also reading in a forum and someone asked whether they should move to Redmond. It was someone who identified as a female lesbian, had two kids, partner, and asked whether it'd be the type of place that they should live. And so many people just wrote back and said, yes, Redmond is, is a wonderful place to live. In fact, we are just having our Pride Festival this weekend. And it was really cool to just be able to see that it was like in a mom's forum, that moms in this area were saying like, yeah, this is a great place to be. So I'm proud of Redmond and proud to be a part of this council. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. And thank you for addressing that. Yes, we can have all the things that we want and need to have. Lots of conversations this month, even though we were on recess, I had a variety of conversations with community members around traffic, traffic signals, climate change, leaf blowers, which I did learn at the installation of the crosswalk, that the city does have many electric leaf blowers and they are working very well. They have a variety of different strengths and battery capacity and they're testing them out and as well as still using some of the older ones for some of the bigger projects. So that was really interesting to hang out with that crew and get to like chat with them about implementing some of these things and see how excited they all were about the crosswalk as well. Had some more conversations about community responders. I got a phone call from King County requesting that their council be able to use our meeting chambers. Forwarded that on to the mayor and Jason to figure out what that process might look like and if that might be a possibility. I also got a phone call from King County Housing Repair about a gentleman and some fines that he is facing for his home. And I visited his home and will be following up with him about the, the process and what needs to be done for him. Attended the Madera ribbon cutting, the LGBTQIA+ crosswalk cutting, the Art Walk, the Port Education Event, and had some conversations with the folks at Futurewise about our 2050 planning. And I'll just go ahead and throw the one I would do for committee in here. I was on the King County Public Health Call today. So that's all of the things in one.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other ombuds items tonight? Okay, seeing none. Are there any committee reports this evening? Yes, Councilmember Stewart?
Earlier today, we held a committee of the whole for planning and public works. We had six items, many of which were to accept dollars from federal and state governments to fund some of our priorities, including the Safe Streets for All Action Plan Grant, a grant from the National League of Cities via ARPA dollars for economic mobility. This is actually a project for Overlake in the Bellwether Housing that's going to be taking, that's going to be built right on the Overlake Village Light Rail campus there and includes like a business incubator and emphasis on multicultural and businesses owned by people of color in the neighborhood. So that's really exciting. We worked on the aforementioned Redmond Community Van Agreement, which is going to bring a new metro service in partnership with Hope Link to our city. And we worked on approving the consultant agreement for some paving along West Lake Sammamish Parkway and had a robust conversation on capital project updates with Director Aaron Burt. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer?
I attended the Riot Eight Management Committee meeting and we discussed the upcoming budget decisions that Riot Eight will be looking at this fall to be able to project our budget for next year. I think I already gave you all the update, but not, not any huge changes there. Only thing to flag is that one part of the work plan that we'll also be approving is that next year we'll be revisiting our ILA that governs the work around salmon recovery, around the Salmon Recovery Council. So that will be an interesting piece of work. And then I also attended the King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. Probably most interesting thing there is that they have begun to implement a project that is a combination of multiple committees I serve on of Riot Eight, as well as the Kokoni Recovery Group, and also King Conservation District is the one leading it, of working on issues around artificial light at night on Lake Sammamish. We got some more state funding on that this year and they have continued to implement some of the funding we got at first to be able to develop a landowner education program around what to do around the lake. So they actually have begun those workshops and started educating the landowners. They also, the other part of it was to have a study of the impacts of light at night. And so they're getting the results of that and combining that with work on, on model ordinance, or at least some guidance around some things that we could do, especially in our Shoreline Master Program updates. So we will be seeing some of those recommendations coming through in the next couple of months. And I'll make sure to be able to share that with council when the final set of, of information comes out so that we can look at that in terms of what our city decides to do on that. So very exciting work and look forward to seeing you continue. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Earlier today, the LTAC Committee met this morning from 9:30 to 12:30. It was attended by, I believe, all of the current members. And the key issue completed was the recommendations for the LTAC grants. And that will be coming, and we had a unanimous, a vote of unanimous to, on those recommendations. And they'll be coming to council, I believe, in early October, either in a study session or maybe a committee. And then ultimately to a business meeting for approval.
Great, thank you. And any other committee reports? I know Council President already shared hers.
Seeing none, there is no unfinished business. There is no new business. The last item on the agenda, last items on the agenda are two executive sessions to discuss potential litigation, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101I for 45 minutes. The executive session will adjourn at, oh gosh, 10:0, I can't even do math this late at night, 10:03. And at, and action is expected to be taken at that time in open session. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting, as well as anyone who's on the teams meeting here. Please leave that. And then we will be back in session in 45 minutes. Thank you.
And we're back. Thank you so much. Counselor President Forsythe, do you have a motion?
I move to accept the settlement amount as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsythe.
Aye.
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 And that passes 7-0. Thank you all very much. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Seeing no further conversation, we are adjourned. Thank you.